Good evening and welcome to the North Idaho College April 16th, 2018 Board Meeting. Would you all rise for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you to our staff for making accommodations for us in the Meyer Health Science Building. This is a different venue for us, but it's really quite nice. I would ask trustee Marie to read our mission statement.
I'll get there in a second. "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning."
Thank you very much. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes and if so, any changes or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted. And then, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No public comment. All right. Board, I would like to move Tab 4, which is approving tenure for 2018, up to our next agenda item. And so with that, hearing any, without hearing anyone tell me not to, I would ask Dr. Lita Burns.
I'll step this side so you can see me. Big screen here. Chair Wood, members of the Board, Dr. McLennan, Mr. Lyons, colleagues and guests. It is my pleasure to be able to present to you the candidates for consideration of tenure this evening. If I could, I would like to ask our four tenure candidates to come up and maybe stand on the stage at that end of the, end of the table here, if you would please. Thank you. And while they're coming up, I'd just like to thank the family members, friends, and colleagues from the campus who came to celebrate this evening with our tenure candidates. So before I introduce the candidates, I just want to make mention about the tenure process itself. I know that the board seated tonight have heard the entire process by which candidates actually become considered for tenure. But just as a reminder and maybe information to those who have not heard this, it is a three-year process that culminates in the fourth year of their hire. For the first three years, they are probationary candidates, and during that time, they are evaluated every semester in every single class by their students. In addition to their student evaluations, their division chair and their faculty evaluation team also evaluate them every single semester in their classroom or in their lab settings. And they usually vary if they are teaching labs as a part of their instructional load. At the end of the first and second year, the faculty evaluation team and the division chair meet to discuss the progress that the faculty member is making, offering them some very valuable critique about their classroom instruction, their methodology, and offer them mentoring and advice as they move forward through the tenure process. And then at the end of their third year of this process, they receive a summative evaluation of their performance. So that by the beginning of their fourth year of their hire, they are at a place where they can have recommendations made on their tenure. Both their division chair and members of their faculty evaluation team offer recommendations to our tenure committee. Our tenure committee is comprised of representatives from each division, and they are all tenured faculty. And they review a portfolio that the faculty member has put together with all of the evaluations, with all of the recommendations, and with all of the student evaluations contained within this portfolio. In addition, the faculty member themselves have to do a self-evaluation annually to contribute to this process. The faculty, the primary piece of this evaluation really is how the faculty perform in the classroom. But also what is reviewed are their educational qualifications, their professional growth, their ability to meet contractual responsibilities, professional ethics, and continuing performance. I receive the recommendations from the tenure committee, and then I review those portfolios and offer my recommendations to the president, who does the same and offers it to the board. And so that's what brings us to this evening. I am very pleased to be able to recommend these four candidates for the conferral of tenure, and I would now like to introduce each candidate to you. Amy Anderson. Amy holds a Juris Doctorate and serves as the instructor and program coordinator for the paralegal program. Amy started at NIC as an adjunct faculty member and then served a full year of special appointment position before accepting the full-time tenure track position. Amy does a superb job engaging with her program advisory committee, and most recently, she provided a significant contribution to the academic master plan committee. Amy Anderson. Kurt Camberlin. Kurt comes to NIC with over 30 years of experience in the machining industry. It is difficult to attract someone with this kind of experience in a trade into education for a variety of reasons, so we're especially thankful to have him here. Kurt holds a standard occupational specialist teaching certificate through the Idaho Career and Technical Education Division. Kurt was instrumental in contributing to the design of NIC's Parker Technical Education Building. But it was his commitment to his students, his commitment to his students was really demonstrated when he worked tirelessly, literally tirelessly, to get the lab set up and ready for his students the first semester we entered that program. Kurt. James Love. James holds a PhD in psychology, excuse me, sociology. James has been an active member of the diversity committee for the past three years and has demonstrated leadership in the Cardinal Reed Program at North Idaho College. His engagement in these co-curricular activities leads me to believe that he understands learning occurs in multi-venues on this campus and not just in the classroom. James. Jessica Ratsky. Jessica holds a Master's of Fine Arts in Photography. Jessica is a, is an accomplished photographer and currently is a featured artist at the Blackwell Gallery in downtown Coeur d'Alene. Jessica has quickly become engaged in both the Coeur d'Alene and NIC art communities. In addition, Jessica serves her division as a lead faculty advisor. Jessica. Members of the Board, I offer to you my recommendation of these four candidates for conferral of tenure this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Burns.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Howard.
I would like to move that the Board approve tenure beginning fall 2018 for the faculty members presented.
Great. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by trustee Dunlop. Discussion. Trustee Howard.
I just, this is one of the more exciting meetings that we have during the course of the year is being able to welcome new members to the tenured faculty. And I, I appreciate the, the discussion about what it takes to get tenured here. Many people don't understand the efforts that you have to put into the program in order to make it this far. And many people don't realize that it doesn't stop with tenure, that every year there's ongoing evaluations by students and periodically from peers. And so as you go through this, you continue to offer your efforts and your, your skills to this institution, and it's evaluated by a wide range of people. And I want to thank you very, very much for being here. Thank you.
Any other Board members would like to speak? Well, I'll always, you can never shut me up. Well, I, everything Ken said. This is such an exciting time for us. We wanted it to be a much more of a celebration for you. Hard work deserves celebration. And all of you embody our mission statement when we talk about the excellence in education. So you've all strived to take the college even further and have it affect the classroom, and that's why we're all here. I, I wanted to just tell our audience that what comes to the Board, Dr. Burns talked about it, but we, we get to look at the summaries of the evaluations by the, by the tenure committees. We get to look at the student summaries, and then of course, the final recommendation. And so we all can feel very confident that you are representing the college well and you're putting your students first. So thank you again. I'm going to call for a vote, and then after the vote, which I feel pretty good about the vote, we will, well, we will adjourn for a celebration. But first of all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations to all of you. So at this point in time, we would like to take a short recess and invite our audience to come and help celebrate the hard work and dedication of, of our professionals. And we'll be right out in the lobby. And there's food. Thank you. We'll have a short recess.
Thank you, and we'll resume our meeting. We just had a nice break celebrating tenure. And again, congratulations to all of our tenure candidates that are now approved and have tenure. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is celebrating success. And I believe, maybe you can help me, Mr. President.
Alternative Spring Break with Grayden.
And then they'll go into the, okay. Thank you. Alternative Spring Break with Grayden Stanley.
Thank you very much, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, and other guests here tonight. It's truly my honor to introduce you to one of our professionals. He'll be talking a little bit more about this program. What you're probably familiar with in student activities and student development and student life and leadership is a lot of the fun activities that our students get to participate in here on campus. But a major thrust of what we do as well is encourage students' community service. I think you're aware of some of the activities they participate in. And civic engagement as well, some of that learning that takes place outside of the traditional classroom. A couple of the leaders that are a part of that program are here tonight. Heather Erickson, who's back in the audience and is the Director of Student Life and Leadership, is here. And then Chloe Van Zant, which might be a familiar name to some of you. Chloe was a student here at North Idaho College, in fact was our ASB president a few years back. And Chloe has been working at North Idaho College the last two years as the coordinator of student development programs. And she has responsibility for some of what she'll be presenting to you tonight. So we're proud of Chloe and the students. Thanks for being here tonight, Chloe.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Wood, Board of Trustees, President's Cabinet, all the guests. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk on volunteer programs. So our volunteer programs started here at NIC as a student-led initiative as a club in 2009. The students cared about volunteering, so they formed a club. And then the college in support of it started, brought it into the official mission of the campus. And so different people have worked with it over those years. Since 2009, the programs have grown and developed. Now we offer two campus-wide volunteer days each year, the Alternative Spring Break Program, as well as new this year, a volunteer fair. So the Alternative Spring Break is provided to students who want to spend their spring break doing something a little bit different, spending their break volunteering, serving others, as opposed to what students might do instead. Over the last 10 years, we've done a lot of different projects for Spring Break. We've built homes for Habitat for Humanity. We helped build tiny villages in Oregon for transitional housing for the homeless population, as well as other things. In 2011, when I was a student here at North Idaho College, I had the privilege of going on the Alternative Spring Break trip when Jess Bennett led it. We went to Portland, Oregon, volunteered with a nonprofit there, and worked with the homeless community. And that trip had a huge impact on me personally. It opened my eyes to the world of homelessness that I wasn't otherwise aware of, as well as really founded my passion for volunteerism and laid that foundation for my life today. So with that in mind, I wanted to try and provide the students with a similarly impactful experience. So that leads us to Alternative Spring Break this year. So in light of the current refugee crisis happening in the world, there's 21 million refugees that are searching for a place to call home. I researched some different things, and we decided to partner with the Refugee Resettlement Center in Twin Falls, Idaho. They partner also with the College of Southern Idaho. It's called College of Southern Idaho Refugee Programs, the CSI Refugee Center. And so I contacted them. I kind of had an idea of what we would be doing. We would be helping teach English to refugees during their first 90 days in the country. We would be working with kids. We'd be learning more about the resettlement process, among other things. And so this was actually our second year returning to CSI. Shortly before we arrived this year, the center had a couple of unforeseen challenges. And so some of the traditional help that they provided, they weren't able to provide this year, so some of that weight was put on our group. And it was really amazing to see our students step up to the challenge, full force, with a ton of energy for all five days of break, ready to give their time and passion to help refugees. So I wanted to share with you a couple of the things that we did. Our group had to be more flexible, work harder, and navigate more challenges than any group that's volunteered with CSI in the past. And they really did an awesome job. So I have a couple of pictures to share with you. This was our team on the last day, still smiling, which was great. We were in charge of conducting the evening program, the Evening English Class. And so this was the first day. We took some of the refugees to Shoshone Falls in Twin Falls and just practiced some different vocabulary about waterfalls, about parks, and things like that. We also took them to Walmart and did scavenger hunts, helping them how to find the items that they need, how to look for the price, basic skills. And then one of the more fun projects that we were given was leading a kids camp. So we thought we would have about 20 kids, and we had 45 kids show up all week. And so we were able to provide some programming for them. Some of these pictures, I blurred them just to protect the privacy of children as requested by the center. So one of the things we did was cookie making. You can see the bowl of cookie dough down here as all the kids are helping stir it, not so successfully, but they're very excited. They'd never made cookies before, and we got to share that with them. Also, one of our students had never made cookies before, and so it was a learning experience for them also. We played duck, duck, goose in the park. This was really funny. I thought, kids, what do I do? And then I was like, oh yeah, duck, duck, goose. And I was like, do you know how to play duck, duck, goose? And they're like, oh, I don't know. So I explained it, well, you sit in a circle, one person stands up, you touch like each person's head. And then this kid looks at me, and he's like, we know how to play this game? We're kids! And I was like, oh yeah, of course, they know it by a different name. There's the language barrier. But we were able to play the game. We partnered with the library and made dollhouses. We taught them how to make putty, which was really fun and extremely messy. You can see this stack, these are peanut butter and jelly sandwiches here. We made a lot of PB&Js every day to feed the kids. And then also, at the end of the week, we partnered with a nonprofit in Twin Falls that has a similar mission compared to Safe Passage here in Coeur d'Alene. And they needed their fence painted, and so we spent a few hours helping paint their fence just to kind of fill out the rest of the week. So that to say, on top of that, we spent time diving into understanding the refugee resettlement process. We started to understand some of the barriers of refugee resettlement from governmental to state level. We had the chance of speaking with a few different refugees who have been here for long enough that they're now U.S. citizens, they're fluent in English, they have jobs. One of them is the Executive Director of the Center there. He shared his story with us, talking about some of the challenges he faced in his life, as well as how much success he's had and what that looked like. So anyway, just to give you an overall, those were some of the things that we did for the week. I'd like to introduce Connor Haas, who's one of the students that attended the trip with us, as he's going to talk about his personal experience for a little bit. Connor?
Good evening. I've never done this, so the board, the guests. So my experience with the Alternative Spring Break was pretty amazing. We got to spend six days sleeping on the floor in a church to save on money, and we ate peanut butter and jelly sandwiches every day. And it was rough, but then you listen to the stories of especially the young kids, what they went through just to get to the United States, and you really realize how that would be nothing to them because they've gone through such horrible things, and they come out still smiling in the end, and they're the most amazing people in the world that you will ever meet. And yeah, like Chloe said, we ended up watching 45 kids for three days, which was, it was really hectic, but it was super amazing. My wife is next to me in that photo, Sarah. We developed a really close relationship with two of the kids. And it's crazy to think about how much of an impact they made on our lives, but I don't know if they'll remember us because they've probably met so many new people, and the whole culture is different. And I don't know. It was an absolutely amazing experience. And yeah, thank you for your time and listening.
So as Connor kind of mentioned, often volunteer work kind of feels a lot like normal work. It can be hard, it can be grueling, sometimes it can be a little bit uninteresting. But really sets volunteerism apart is the heart behind it, the passion, and also the immense need for it. Our students were put up to a tough task this year, tougher than I anticipated it to be, and I could not believe how much they stepped up to the plate. But more than that, this impact, this experience impacted me so much personally, and it was so cool to be a part of that experience for the students that went this year. Their perseverance and dedication was so inspiring, they did everything that was asked of them. Stories like Connor's and the other students that went on the trip are a true testament of the importance of this volunteer program, as well as why volunteerism supports our NIC mission and why this is such an important part of our college. I just want to say thank you so much. I know you do a lot of important work for the school, and thank you for listening to a small piece of it, but some piece that's really big to me and really important to me. So thank you so much for your time.
Oh, Chloe, thank you. That was just truly a beautiful report. Board comments?
Questions?
Could you do me a favor and go back to the picture that you had at Shoshone Falls?
Yeah.
Now, I see a rainbow there. And everybody is at the end of the rainbow. That really looks symbolic to what you folks accomplished there. I thought that was really cool. I don't know if you noticed that in the picture before, but what you did there was something very special. You and your group bring honor to this institution. You help people who don't know who we are understand what it means to come from North Idaho College because you carry that name with you. And I want to thank you very much, you and all the members of the volunteers and all the people who went with you and are engaged in your programs for what you do for this college. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Well, Chloe, I would tell you that, wow, what an incredible program. I wish I had been there with you. You know, these people, these victims, and they have, they've experienced the atrocities of war, they've seen the worst of humanity, but they also got to see the best of humanity with your group. So thank you, and thank you for a really, really lovely report. It's very, Ken said it best. I mean, you just make us so proud and bring great honor. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So that's what I would do. All right. Well, our next agenda item is there's this beautiful golden thing that had been in front of me the whole day, and I thought, what are we going, when can we talk about it? It's awesome. So there's somebody really special that will tell us about it. And so I'd like to bring up Al Williams to talk about the NIC Men's Basketball NWA Championships.
Well, good evening, members of the boards, Chairman Wood, Dr. McLennan, President's Cabinet, and esteemed guests. Thank you for allowing us to talk about athletics this evening. We're here to talk about basketball, but I have to give some shout-outs to the other sports programs. We're having a fantastic year to date. Our volleyball team was ranked number one this year, won the East Region. Our wrestling team finished sixth in the nation with five All-Americans. Our golf team won the championship last year. We didn't get a chance to bring them up here, but they're in right in the road to possibly win it again. They just won a tournament today here at Avondale. And our softball, right now, is ranked number one in the NWA. They are 27 and 3, ranked number one, and leading the NWA with an 18 and 2 record in the East Region. So hopefully, we'll be back here to celebrate them as well. So the fall sports have done well, the winter sports are on track to bring more trophies back. But this is our fourth year in the NWA. Overall, this is only our second year for the outdoor, excuse me, our indoor programs. And as we made the switch over from the NJCAA for basketball, only three teams in the nation finish the season with a winning, with the win in the year at the two-year level, and that's in the NJCAA, the California schools, and the NWA. We had a chance to play the California champion with the NWA champion, hopefully we're going to play the NJCAA champion next year. But it's fun to end on a winning note. So we're the region champ for the Northwest Athletic Conference. So we have our head coach, Corey Simmons, who was here with the transition. He started with us as a head coach. We made the transition to the NWA four years ago, and this is his fourth year as head coach. He's been with us for 14 years, and since he's been the head coach, he's had at least 25 wins in his four years as our head coach here. So he knows the ups and downs of being in the NWA. Last year, we ranked number one and went in there with high hopes and didn't quite get it done, so he had a little chip on his shoulder this year. So he is able to come back this year and fulfill the promise he made to the team that we were going to be back here next year. And so I want to bring up Coach Corey Simmons and his staff, and I will switch over to his... And I will switch over to his...
How about you leave an athletic director in a basketball costume?
There we go. All right. Now we're good. You can paddle from here. Welcome head coach Corey Simmons.
Thank you, Al.
Chair Wood, Board of Trustees, President McLennan, thank you for having us. This is an absolute honor, President's Cabinet as well as a guest. This is an absolute honor for us to come and celebrate a championship, not only with our team and our institution, but with you guys and our community. So we're really excited. Just want to talk a little bit briefly on kind of what happened, kind of went down for the year for us. We had a great year, like Mr. Williams said, with the transition. Last year we had a great year. We were number one in the NWAIC and we felt we came up a little bit short. This year we didn't have such a great regular season. We had a lot of new faces in, so it took us a little while to get going. And once we got going, it kind of clicked at the right time. You know, they always talk about that. If you watch NCAA tournament, Loyola Chicago, all those teams, it's not, it's always when you're playing good basketball. So we were luckily, lucky to be playing good basketball down the end. And I've been coaching for 18 years. Luckily, I've been fortunate enough to be here for 14 of those. And in 18 years of coaching, all my years of playing, I don't know if I've been a part of more exciting basketball than we had this year, if any of you were able to watch it. The semifinal game, we got the draw and not the semifinal, it was our second game, we got the draw to play the host Everett team, who we'd already played twice this year and split with them. They beat us at their place and we beat them here. And both those were really tough battles, so we knew it was going to be a dogfight. So we came out and played really well. Both teams played really well. It was an intense game. Went into double overtime. I literally, probably 15 times, no exaggeration if you watched the game, thought we were going to lose it. And then turned around the next possession and went, "Okay, we're going to win it." "No, we're going to lose this." "Okay, we're going to win it." And we went into double overtime, won a great game in double overtime and beat the host, the host team. Statistically, a couple of our players, I'll introduce them here to you. Rayquan Evans, come on up, Ray.
Corey, can we have, I don't want to embarrass you guys, but nobody wants to see us on TV. You're the champs.
Come on, Ray.
Can we come up and have you in front of the trophy? Come on. We want your mom to see you on TV. Can they get through here okay?
Yeah.
The camera will get them over here.
Yeah.
Right in front, block me and there you go. Fabulous.
You're not going to go through there.
Oh, you don't want to, how will your mom?
I'm his sidekick, so I'm always with him.
Okay, all right.
So we'll make the introductions. To the far left there is Ashanti Potts Woods, out of Tacoma, Washington. He had a great tournament for us. Then Rayquan Evans, out of Billings, Montana. This is George Swanson. He's been with me all four years since I've been the head coach. He's kind of the backbone behind our program. But these two guys, we brought these two guys because they were the all-tournament MVP. Rayquan was the all-tournament MVP. And Ashanti Potts Woods was, made first team all-tournament, which was really big for We're big on just putting players in positions to make plays. And these guys made a lot of good plays for us down the stretch and it made us look really good. And we really didn't do a whole lot of anything, but we just had the best seats in the house. So Ashanti played a great tournament, had a great offensive tournament for us, scored a lot of points for us. So getting to the championship game, rewind to the game against Everett. Rayquan finished with 48 points, 42 of which of those were in the second half.
Wow.
So which, you know, which is, which was pretty amazing. He kind of took that game over for us. So we made it to the championship game and we look at, I think we had 17 minutes on the clock and we were down 20 points in the second half. And I looked at George and I said, "Really? We came this far and we're going to lose like this? We're going to get blown out." We kind of just looked and these guys just kind of took it on their backs. And Ashanti finished that 17-minute stretch with 23 points and Ray finished it with 22 points. And we came back and won in pretty amazing fashion in overtime in a championship game, down 20 with 16 minutes left. And these guys just kind of did what they do and played really well. So it was a great year for us. We're excited. Ashanti has a few scholarship offers. He's going on a couple of visits to some four-year schools and he's excited for that. And we're lucky enough to have Ray back next year to help lead us to another one hopefully, Ray. No pressure.
Well, gentlemen, can we shake your hands?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
I have a question. Do either of you guys see any shot you don't like?
That's an honest answer.
It's honest. Good answer.
Thank you.
It all looks like open gym.
Yeah. Good job, guys.
So here's a picture of Ashanti playing a little defense. We had to dig deep to find one of those pictures. But we found it. We found it. This is, the great thing about, one other thing I want to point out is, we love basketball. We love to win. We like to win. And we win here at NIC. But it's not just about winning. It's about, we talk to the guys every day about the process and understanding the process. And although we'll take this championship forever, the relationships we make and what we teach these boys how to be student athletes, you know, we talk all the time about being a student athlete, not an athlete student. And what they learn from that, learn from their experience here at NIC is pretty amazing. So it's stuff like this, the guys that didn't get to play a whole lot as much as they want, we're just excited for these guys. We got a great, we had a great turnout with a lot of fans that showed up. President McLennan was there screaming and yelling and yelling at us, especially when we were down.
No, but when we were down 20, I think I said to Al, "I'm not worried." That's not what I said.
That wasn't said. He just said, "Why aren't you worried?"
Yeah. There's a little celebration afterwards, which was really exciting for us. The crowd and the players stormed the floor, which was awesome. And there's the two of them with the trophies and their all-tournament team and then our team photo. But we're excited about the guys and winning this championship, bringing it back. It's been a long time and we've always wanted to do this and we're fortunate to do this. They helped me out a lot because in my four years of head, as a head coach, we've won a lot of games. We've won 100, over 100 games in four years, but none of those, and Al kept reminding me that none of those were postseason. We kept getting to the postseason games, but we'd always fall short in the postseason. So I told these guys, "Man, you're going to, you're going to get me in trouble if we can't win a postseason game." And they came through for us and won a championship. So we're really excited. One other thing I want to point out is with some of the community service that these guys do, they're involved in the community. It's not just about basketball for our team. You know, we love basketball, but it's not just about basketball. They're always involved in the community. Yesterday, we took a handful of them up to Wallace, Idaho. Half of them didn't know where Wallace, Idaho was or heard of Wallace, Idaho. But they invited us to come up and do a clinic and do a camp with kids. So we said, "Sure, we'll do it." And we showed up thinking we'd get 15, 20 kids. We had 83, 83 kids in the gym. And we spent four hours playing games and teaching kids how to dribble and shoot and having fun with them. So that's a lot of what these guys do as well, outside of, that we don't hear about a lot, and they do a great job in the community. And then on the alumni side of things, you know, we're excited to have people not only graduate from NIC, but move on and graduate. This year is a big year for us. We got former athletes graduating from Chaminade University, Florida State University, Idaho, Boise State, all former players of ours. We're excited for that, for them to get on there and finish their career. And on the basketball side, I know there's some Gonzaga fans in here, but go Florida State. The Seminoles knocked off Gonzaga. And Brian Angola-Rodas, one of their best players, is one of our former players. And, you know, I was talking to Trustee Howard today and talking about how he thinks this is home. He tells Coach G all the time, "I can't wait to get back to Coeur d'Alene. I can't wait for the summer to get here to go back to Coeur d'Alene, hang out with people at NIC." He loves it here. So it's pretty exciting to see what athletics, like Al said, not just men's basketball, but all of athletics at NIC is doing. It's pretty fun to be a part of. So thank you again for having us and thank you for celebrating with us.
Trustee Dunlap.
I just want to acknowledge, he failed to mention one alumni who's done really well, Sam Dowd. Many of you may have heard, he was the NCAA Division I Award winner for the Award of Courage. He's out of Idaho State, got recognized at the Final Four this year. He was all over the news with his story about his troubled childhood, how he made it to be a Division I athlete. But just to the leadership of these guys and the kind of kids they recruit, they represented us well throughout the nation. And I just came from the NWAIC meetings today, and Corey probably doesn't even know this, but he was voted the NWAIC Men's Basketball Coach of the Year.
Yeah! Wow!
And one thing to add with Al, if you get downtime, Google Sam Dowd and the Most Courageous Athlete. So he was awarded the NCAA Most Courageous Athlete of the Year by the sportswriters. And me and George had the opportunity to fly down to San Antonio and be with him when he got his presentation, which was absolutely amazing. That kid is something special and he's Cardinal family. So thank you again.
Oh my gosh. Wow. Trustee, Joe, Corey, can you come back? And Joe, you wanted to speak?
I did want to make a couple of comments. First of all, Ashanti and Ray, thank you for saving Coach Simmons bacon. Corey and George, super job. I mean, absolutely wonderful. I mean, you bring great credit to North Idaho and North Idaho College in particular. And lastly, NWAIC doesn't seem to be, to be too bad of a fit for you.
It's not. We like it. We like winning.
Trustee Howard.
I had, I had the privilege to come to the Booster Club celebration that had, I think, most all the members of your team there. And it was really impressive, quite frankly, to hear you folks and your team members talk about what you had learned through the course of this year from each other, from your coaches and from your experiences. And it helps us all to understand that athletics is not just about winning, it's about learning. It's probably as intense a course as you could get here because it involves understanding what rules are all about, understanding how to live by the rules, understanding how to live with each other and teamwork and being good citizens and all those things. And I want to thank you because as I indicated earlier, you are the face of NIC. I mean, we sit at this meeting tonight, there might be 100 people watching us. There are thousands that watch you folks. There are thousands that see what you do and are proud of the name that you bear for NIC. And I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, Corey, did you know about this latest honor?
I did not. I did not. So that's news to us.
That's huge.
So we're excited. And it's more of a, it's a team honor. Obviously, Coach G, he's behind the scenes 90% of the time, but he, I always tell people all the time, I was just fortunate enough for the president and Al to put my name on the door, but he does all the work and the staff does all the work behind us. So it's as much of an honor to them and my staff than it is to me. Thank you.
Well, this is great. Rick, go ahead.
Well, I just say, so it sounds like the conference is warming up to NIC?
I wouldn't say that so much. I wouldn't say that. They don't, they don't like us to win, but we're going to keep doing it.
Well, you know, the celebrating success is our favorite part of the agenda. It gets a little dry after this, but you know, two wonderful presentations. And so congratulations to you and to your wonderful players and, gosh, time for celebration. We better go back out and have some more food. Here comes the good stuff still. We're not to the dry stuff yet. We have constituent reports. And for ASNC, Robert Smith.
Good evening, Chair Wood, Board of Trustees, President McLennan, President's Cabinet and guests. President Weeks apologizes for not being able to make it, but he has a class on Mondays from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. So as the ASNC vice president, I'm here filling in and I'm proud to do so. It hasn't been too long since the last Board of Trustees meeting and we weren't able to have an ASNC board meeting in that time. So we just have a few things to report. ASNC has been working hard on elections. So this week is the voting week in our elections. And hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be able to report to you the full elections board, I mean, the full results of the election. The induction ceremony is the 26th of April. And so our next student government team will be inducted and then we'll start the turnover process and help get them trained up for next year. If invitations have not already gone out, then invitations will be out soon. And so that will go to the Board of Trustees and President's Cabinet. We're replacing the massage chairs that are upstairs in the sub. A few of them have some mechanical problems that are going on and so we'd like to get those replaced to have nice working order so students can go and, you know, get that needed relaxation when they need to. The ASNC banquet is coming up as well on the 3rd of May. And invitations for that have also been sent out. And so we'd love for all of you to be in attendance in that as well. The ASNC budget honestly is looking kind of bleak for next year, but that's as all the fee-based budgets are. We had to cut some programs that we traditionally supported due to lower enrollment. And one of those that happened this time was on the, our support for Outdoor Pursuits. And so our budget resolution is on the agenda for our next ASNC board meeting, which is the 24th, which is next Tuesday. Really, that's all we have to report. If there are any questions?
Board, are there any questions on the report?
Thanks.
Nice job. Thank you.
And tell Caleb he owes you a coffee or something. Sounds good to me.
All right, that takes us to staff assembly. Suzy Deen?
Good evening. So we kicked off our April staff assembly meeting with Lita Burns. She went over the academic master plan, the process that's being made, kind of talked to us about the structure of the committees, how they've broken it down and the work that they're doing. And we had Alex Harris and Gus Wessel, who gave us a debrief of the recent shelter-in-place lockdown drill that we had. After this lockdown, they sent out a survey to all the students and staff. And so he shared some of those results. He said that the percentage of staff and students who said they knew how to lock down and shelter in place was up significantly over when they had the initial one in 2015. So more people are understanding that. And 69% responded in the survey that they were either satisfied or very satisfied overall with the emergency communications coming out of NIC. They did have some people who did not receive the emergency text, but when they looked further into that, it tended to be an incorrect phone number in the system for those people. So I would say that we could all agree that Alex and Gus are doing a great job at doing what they can to make NIC a safe campus. And as the mother of a current student, I personally appreciate that a great deal. Then outside of our monthly meetings, we've just closed off the nominations for the Staff Excellence Awards. They're currently being reviewed by a committee, which is made up of staff members that were selected by the PC members. They will be meeting this week to review, do a final review of all of the nominations and then the selections will be announced at the commencement breakfast. At our May staff assembly meeting, we'll be recognizing everybody that was nominated because it's a pretty big thing to be recognized by your peers. And I would also commend the staff members who took the time to submit a nomination to recognize another coworker because I think that speaks a lot as well to the employee population that we have. Then we are also now accepting nominations for open senate positions, the staff assembly vice chair position and the secretary. And I really expect a heated race for the vice chair because we all know it's a stepping stone to this glamorous position right here.
Yep. Great, great report. Any questions, board? Well, I, I'm just so happy that you talked about Gus and Alex. I worked with them for a long time too and I think they do a fabulous job. And campus safety is on the minds of everyone. So I'm so glad, Grayden, kudos to you for keeping it out there in the forefront and making sure that our faculty, staff and students feel comfortable. Very, very nice. All right, Jeff Carr, Faculty Assembly.
Thank you Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, President's Cabinet and guests. Faculty Assembly held its elections this month, and this will be my last year serving as Faculty Assembly Chair. We have elected Joe Jacoby to fill this position, as Brian Haniford, also in the Communication Finance Division, will be taking over as Vice Chair. Lisa Wilcox will continue to serve as Secretary Treasurer. Faculty Assembly also heard from Dr. Lita Burns as well to inform us about the Academic Master Plan, give us a little details about that, and seek our feedback, and tell us where we can deliver such feedback. We also heard from the Common Read Committee. Next semester's Common Read will be Tribe. They wanted to advertise the fact that there will be a new INT R250 course that will be eventually devoted to that Common Read to further get that more incorporated into our campus life. We also passed a resolution at our last meeting briefly. It was concerning campus mail delivery. Within the past few months, campus mail delivery had been reduced from twice to one time per day. And there were some instructors who feel it was hard to communicate with the testing center in a viable way. So we passed a resolution requesting it go back to twice a delivery day. And finally, we also heard a brief review and an update on the faculty compensation policy, which will be going before the Senate in the near future.
Great, great. Board, any questions? Nice report. Thank you. That takes us to the Senate. Lisa Kellerman.
Hello, Chair Wood, Trustees, President, guests. The Senate has not met since our last meeting. We do have a meeting tomorrow. We will go through a first reading of the compensation policy, and then we will also be looking at a facilities and affiliation policy. So we do have that on the agenda. This, however, will be my last meeting as the Senate Chair, as Senate Purids bylaws elects the new Chair at the May meeting, which will fall before your May meeting. And then you will have a new Chair, probably Jessica Adams, who is our Vice Chair. She's wonderful. I am very honored to have worked with her this whole year. And I'm very thankful that you gave the opportunity to me to work with all of you this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice report. Board, any questions, comments? Thank you. This is the time of year where you all say goodbye to us. Although I feel like you and Joe are just trading it back like Ken and I do. So, thank you all very much. President's Report.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Diana Rentsch to come up to the podium. It's my pleasure to introduce to the Board Diana Rentsch, who's our new Associate Vice President of Planning, Strategy, and Effectiveness. Diana was formerly the Director of Planning and Improvement at Western Wyoming Community College in Rock Springs, Wyoming, where she was responsible for strategic planning, accreditation, institutional research, assessment, and institutional improvement initiatives. Kind of a familiar theme. She earned her master's degree from Stanford University and a bachelor's degree in English from Lynnfield College. And Diana, welcome.
Thank you so much. Chair Wood, Board of Trustees, members, President's Cabinet, thank you so much for this opportunity. I very much am looking forward to working with you all to further integrate the planning at North Idaho College. Very excited about the various directions that we can go with this. There's a lot of, a lot of great opportunities that are going to present themselves in the coming years. I have the pleasure, I can see already, of working with a very aligned and enthusiastic President's Cabinet, who have a strong leadership at the institution. And under the thoughtful leadership of Dr. McLennan, I'm very much looking forward to working with you and meeting more closely with you in the future. So, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Nope. Thank you. Just wanted to make the introduction. Thank you. And I also have the pleasure tonight to do a little more on the student success side. I'd like to ask Erica Case and Danielle Nickerson to stand up, please. So these are our two all Idaho academic scholars representing Idaho. Danielle is from Rathrum. She currently lives in Post Falls. And she is an elementary major transferring to the University of Idaho on the Coeur d'Alene Campus when she finishes up. And she's been very involved with our campus community, serving as a trio mentor for the time that she's been here. And we had lunch together last week. And I understand that even after she leaves, she's not giving up that position in some capacity. That's how committed she is. Erica is from Troy, Idaho. And she's a Business Finance major transferring to the University of Idaho, but going south a little bit. She served as an ASNC Senator last year and currently works at the ASNC Front Desk. And this year, she served as a Logistics Coordinator for Phi Theta Kappa, our service honorary. These are two exceptional student leaders, high academic achievers. And I should also mention that Erica was selected as Idaho's New Century Scholar, which is a significant honor. She'll be recognized at the American Association of Community Colleges. I'll be attending that conference next week. She will be joining me and will be presented with that recognition there, along with some significant scholarship money as well. So I'd just like to congratulate these two students representing. And you guys can go ahead and be seated. And I'm going to ask two more people to stand up. Actually, maybe, well, two. Paige Zeller, if you'll stand up, and Rachel Simmons. And Paige is our incoming Phi Theta Kappa President. She'll be actually taking over from President Robert Smith, who will be vacating that position. And Paige is from Elko, Nevada. She's a Psychology Major and transferring to Eastern Washington University after NIC. And I see her almost every day when I go to the Student Wellness and Recreation Center. She serves as a Facility Supervisor there, as well as a Recreational Sports Supervisor. So congratulations on your appointment. I know you're going to do a lot of great things. And I just met Rachel Simmons tonight, so I don't have your background. Maybe Grayden has some information on that. But Rachel will be serving as the VP of Scholarship. So we're starting to build some very strong leadership around the Service Honorary Organization, and lots of good things to follow from that. So just wanted to make sure you saw these faces and had a chance to see them.
Congratulations.
So going into this, on April 4th, Coeur d'Alene Area Economic Development Jobs Plus held their annual meeting. It was a big meeting, widely attended, as it usually is this year. It included the Lieutenant Governor Brad Little and other dignitaries from around the state and region. And the only reason I mention that here, you may have read in one of my weekly reports that NIC was awarded the Annual Partnership Recognition Award for the significant role in, over the last several years, significant role that we're playing in regional economic development. So that's quite a recognition from that organization. Invite you to the Nine Point Agreement Celebration, 20 years old. That's going to be happening on April 25th from 3:00 to 5:00. And we've, Grayden just got up and walked over there, but Grayden and others here, Laura, Dr. Burns, and members of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, other faculty members, Alan Lamb, Victor Begay, our new American Studies faculty member. Been looking at the 20-year agreement, looking at what we're doing with curriculum, the actual, this American Studies program. You had brought before you earlier this year the naming of the buildings and made the approval to that. We also have the indoor storyboards that are being created to celebrate and educate our community and our college about the culture, cultural heritage of the Native population. So that celebration's happening next week, and I hope you all can make it. I will be speaking tomorrow to about 80 guests at the Lunch with the President. This is the North Idaho College Foundation event, where we invite members who contribute $1,000 or more to the NIC College Foundation. It's an annual meeting, and I'll be providing an update on some of our activities for that. Then I'm off to the State Board of Education. It's at the University of Idaho. And from there, I'll be leaving for the National Cybersecurity Educational Executive Leadership Forum. And that, last year, it was at that meeting where NIC was designated by the Department of Homeland Security and National Security Agency as a Center of Excellence for Cybersecurity. And so this is just building on that. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. You're busy, very busy. And thank you for highlighting the students. That's always fun for us. Board, any questions of Dr. President McLennan's report? Okay. That takes us on to Old Business, Tab 1, our second reading of Information Technology Policy, 3.08.06. Ken Wardinsky.
Ooh, now we get to the exciting stuff.
Yeah.
Go, Ken.
I think this is that dry stuff you were talking about.
Of course not.
Thank you Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, President's Cabinet and guests. This is Policy 3.08.06, Second Reading for Media Sanitation and Disposal Policy. I'll answer any questions.
Trustee Howard.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Media Sanitation and Disposal Policy 3.08.06.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Any further questions for Ken on this? Fabulous. We're going to get right through these. Ken, you done a nice job on these. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That takes us to the Second Reading of Information Technology Policy 3.08.07.
Chair Wood, Member Trustees, this is Policy for Cloud Services, primarily focused about the acquisition of cloud services and using NIC data in those cloud services.
Great. Trustee Howard.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Cloud Computing and Data Storage Services Policy 3.08.07.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Nice job. And finally, Tab 3, our Second Reading of Information Technology Policy 3.08.08.
Madam Chair, Member Trustees, this policy is to establish a security awareness training program for the employees of NIC.
Great. Do I have a motion? Trustee Howard.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Security Awareness Training Policy 3.08.08.
And do I have a second?
I'll second down.
Trustee Murray. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice work, Ken. You were just so clear last time.
Have a moment. I'd like to just put a public thank you to a lot of people that helped me out. I would not be in this position to put in two revisions of policy and six new policies without these people. So just a thank you to the IT Planning Policy Committee members, Steve Smith, Sarah Garcia, George McAllister, Dr. Thomas Scott, Mark McGill, John Trombold, Fred Swanson, and our student representative Ben Anderson. And a very special thank you to the members of the Senate Joint Subcommittee with them, Karen Rupel, John Trombold, Steve Smith, Thomas Scott, Kathy Sparks, Lisa Kellerman, Ben Segwin, Brian Segwin, and our student representative Jimmy Sauber. And a special thank you to all of the Senate members last year and this year, and those two Senate Chairs who helped me out so much, Mr. Gus Gittle and Lisa Kellerman. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. That takes us on to Tab 5, our First Reading of College Calendar's Academic Years 2029 through 2030, and 2030 through 2031. I am dying to hear what we're all going to do then, Grayden.
Optimistic to think that far in advance.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, members of President's Cabinet and other guests, I'm hoping this won't be a too-long-of-agenda item for you here tonight. I'm proud to present to you the calendar for the 2029, 2030, 2030, 2031 years. As you know, it's our practice to look out that far and have those dates set in advance. That work is done by the Calendar Committee, under the leadership of our Director of Admissions and Register, Tammy Haft. Our calendars, we try to align, if you can possibly do that, that far in advance, with the calendars of the public schools in our area, so that our spring break and other important dates are aligned that way. Mostly what you see here are traditional beginning and end of semesters and those holidays that we generally always celebrate. So there isn't anything different from that, and I'm not needing to take action necessarily tonight, just the first reading on approval of those calendars.
All right. Thank you. We're going to check our calendar against this calendar. We'll let you know.
I'm expecting that we'll all meet back here in 2030, and we can decide whether it's a good decision.
Thank you, Grayden.
Thank you.
All right. Our First Reading of our General Fund Budget, Chris Martin.
Chair Wood, Members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity to come before you as our annual tradition for the first reading of the, it's very hard to say this, FY 2019 General Fund Budget for North Idaho College. As we get started this evening, I'd just like to provide a couple of introductory comments before we walk through the presentation. I want to thank all of my colleagues who are here tonight across the institution for their really hard work this year, and creating a really broad-based, transparent process. This truly was a ground-up budget development process with, I'm going to look to my friends and the faculty who really, really put forth additional effort this year as divisions and departments skied together and working through their individual budgets. Each division had some highlights, but faculty, I think this year was definitely the shining star is how they put their budgets together. With Dr. McLennan's guidance this year, we used a zero-based framework. So each budget had full justification for almost every item that was included in the budget. A lot of hard work there, going through, making sure that we weren't just continuing on what we've done in the past, but really doing a deep dive to ensure that we're only putting in the budget what we absolutely need to be successful. This year, there's a continued focus on planning. As you met the Assistant Vice President Dana Rentsch this afternoon already, that focus continues, and that's been a big part of this conversation. You'll see investment in enrollment services and the student experience, continued support for guided pathways, and student advising. And then, again, as we've mentioned, this is a modeling year for outcomes-based funding. So all of that has been kind of a backdrop as we've set principles for this year's FY 2019 budget. A few planning assumptions to walk through. We're forecasting a 2.5% decline for credit enrollment for the next fiscal year. This has a revenue impact of $255,000. You'll also note that we are forecasting a 25% increase in dual credit enrollment, which will have a very positive $359,000 increase. For tuition this year, some of the planning assumptions revolve around a $1.50 per credit increase for our in-district students, and proposing a 5% per credit increase for tuition for non-district students. Another piece of the planning assumptions I'd like to highlight as we begin is the enrollment workload adjustments. As you may be aware, this is a big part of how the state appropriation comes to us, and it's weighted on a three-year rolling average of our enrollment. And this year, there's a $399,000 impact to revenue and a reduction of the state appropriation. You'll notice there's no proposed levy change in this fiscal year's budget. And there is also a change in employee compensation that includes a step increase for all general fund, full-time faculty and staff, an increase to our adjunct and overload rate, as well as an increase for part-time employees. So you cannot probably see this extremely well, but this is page 7 of your packet. And just as we kind of begin this conversation tonight about where we're going with our revenue projections, a couple of quick things that I think will be easy for you to see here is, the dotted blue line at the very top is all academic credits generated at North Idaho College. The orange line is all career and technical education credits generated at North Idaho College.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Trustee Banducci.
Chris, based on the meetings that we had individually as trustees, and the packets we got there, is there any changes that you want to point out between what we had then, mine dated April 11, and this, it's in the book, dated April 16, as I'm looking between the two? Should I be aware of anything that's different, or can I look at one or the other and they'd be the same?
If you look at the one that was presented tonight in your packet, that's the presentation we're going off of, so all the page numbers will match. Everything is the same except what's noted in red.
Okay.
So there are a couple of items in the Board's packets that are in red font that note the changes that occurred from the meetings we had previously. An example of that would be on page 3, showing the cost breakout for each portion of the employee change in compensation. There was a request to break that out with each piece. You'll note that change. Another example would be, we included the College of Eastern Idaho as an example that was requested, and you'll see that listed on page 11 as an example.
I don't know if it was just me, but thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. And thank you for that allowing me to address the couple of the changes that were requested throughout the one-on-one meetings. So this conversation with this particular slide and the credit trends by student type, one thing we just want to note as we begin this conversation is, we are proposing a 25% increase in dual credit. And our student mix continues to change, really, really positive results with dual credit. And this is an example just to show the traditional students, how they break out by academic, as well as with CTE, as well as showing the impact of dual credit. So a couple of things happening here. And you'll notice the incredible increase in dual credit, that's the gray line at the bottom, which is offset, of course, by the dark blue line, the solid blue line, which is on-campus. which is offset, of course, by the dark blue line, the solid blue line, which is on-campus, traditional academic enrollment. These are part of the planning assumptions that the college worked through. These have been ongoing conversations we've had across campus with stakeholder groups, including the management team. Just to be aware, as we go into this budget process, how our credit mix may be changing slightly here. On page one of the packet, just a couple of pieces to note from a revenue standpoint, I'd like to point out for this fiscal year. In this budget, we're proposing a general fund revenue budget of $48.9 million. This equates to a $1.85 million increase over the prior fiscal year, which is a 3.78% increase overall. In this revenue is included $184,000 increase in state appropriations, which is a 1.43% increase year-over-year, and $179.9000 increase in the CTE allocation, which represents a 3.3% increase over fiscal year 18. We're forecasting new property on the rolls to equal $284.7000. Again, this is new development. If you had raw land last year and you built a house this year, we would anticipate there being an increase in that value, and this takes into account new property as it comes on the rolls. And also, important to note, we're proposing a $496,000 fund balance transfer in this budget. And that number is made up to equal the impact of the enrollment workload adjustment, the $399,000 that we spoke to prior, as well as benefit cost changes from the state this year. So this allows the college to essentially remain whole, looking at the impact of reductions in state funding this fiscal year.
Questions?
Trustee Banducci.
As we're looking at this, and I'm trying to track your bullets with a couple of pages and where we met, I noticed the number for the new property matches exactly the CTE state allocation increase. That's kind of interesting. Just a random thing, I guess those two numbers matched up almost identically. Do you see what I'm seeing, Chris? Was that intentional, or are those numbers in the right spot?
If you'll note on page two of the packet, the CTE funding is $179,000 increase, and the new property on the rolls is that next number down, $284,000 increase.
And I was looking at the wording, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
It's on tab six.
Oh, and the front page there would be...
Yeah, yeah, what would be the third paragraph down under the discussion. I was trying to match up the text with the chart, with the graph, or the matrix.
That is a mistake. That is a typo.
Okay.
So you're correct.
Sorry, you know, we had the back and forth, and we did this hour and a half we spent the other day.
Absolutely.
Going through this thing line by line. Okay. Just wanted to make sure what I was seeing, because I saw a couple of different things there. And then we talked about the increase, which is on the second page, for the step. Now, if I remember right, that's about a 2.2%?
It averages out to a 2% increase in the step.
About 2%. Okay.
Is that it?
For the moment.
Just want to point out one line here on this particular chart, and that's that green line at the top that shows our enrollment trend as a comparator against the revenue mix the college receives. So the good news in this is, you'll continue to see, over time, increased state funding. If you look at the top, blue and yellow, against the portion of our budget that's funded by students. So this year, the portion of the budget funded by tuition and fees is 26%, and you'll see the state allocation at the top as that translates with our enrollment. And so this year, overall, we talked about that mix between dual credit and four-credit students on the prior slide, that chart, but forecasting 6,373 FTE this year. And again, we're seeing an increase in total FTE, which is positive. On page 10 and 11 is a focus on our tuition proposals for this fiscal year. Proposing again a $1.50 per credit hour increase in tuition for in-district students. That equates to a 1.07% increase for in-district students, and generates $73,000 in tuition revenue. Had the opportunity to visit with the ASNC Board last week, meet with students directly, and share this, and get their feedback and concerns. And while no student wants to see an increase in tuition, the feedback from the students was that this was in line, and it was prudent, and was not excessive. We're also proposing a 5% tuition increase for all non-district students. The variation on that depends on the residency of the student, between a 2.78% and a 4.49% increase, depending on the residency status of the student. This will generate $222,000 in revenue. Of note is we're going to continue to waive the student accident insurance fee for fiscal year 19. Just a brief overview of the expenses for this next fiscal year. I wish this slide was correct. It's a $1.1 million increase in expenses without the impact of CEC, and that includes the state line, item appropriations, CTE program expansion, specifically dental, and cybersecurity, and then increased costs associated with dual credit operations. As we see the dramatic increase in revenue for dual credit, there is some expense associated with that dramatic rise in dual credit, so this accounts for that increased operational expenses regarding dual credit. To Trustee Banducci's point previously, the total cost for the change in employee compensation this year is equivalent to $676,000. That includes the cost of the step, which equates to 2% for general fund employees, the adjunct and overload increase, as well as the part-time increase. And this will be a total $48.9 million general fund expense budget for FY 19. The salary and benefit portion of this budget is equal to 70.27%, with operating costs making up 29.7% of the overall general fund budget.
Chris, as we always try to equalize between CTE and academic transfer, and we've got some money from the state this year, part of that, I believe, towards employee compensation for the CTE. How much did we have to pick up out of pocket to equalize that between academic transfer and the CTE this year?
Overall, we picked up, this generally covers, we cover a third of this increase on general. The CT is a little bit more nuanced than that, because they cover, by theory, all of it. But as a whole, for the entire general fund, CTE and academics included, we cover a third. You'll notice on page eight, the new proposed positions that are included in this budget. On page eight, just to highlight those briefly, again, this budget is really geared around the program expansion and line items that came through the state funding this year. The computer science faculty is a state line item, approved by the state, and it funded in part through the state appropriation that we received. The other two positions that are specific to CTE are the digital technology instructor and the cyber security instructor. These are funded through the CTE allocation and program expansion we received this fiscal year. There is an addition of a math education center coordinator. I spoke earlier about some of the priorities of this budget, and principles of this budget were around enhancing the student experience and making sure we're providing support for students. This is in direct relation to that principle, really supporting retention efforts and support around math and remediation efforts for math. This is a repurposed position that was already included in the budget. The only new position this year is the SIM Lab Coordinator. This, if you haven't been in the SIM Lab here in the Meyer Health and Science Building, I'd encourage you to walk through there, but this is the result of the healthcare tax grant, and this actually is the person who makes all the robotics work. On page 15, just briefly, we're wrapping this up, and I'll be happy to stand for questions. Page 15 highlights the fee-based budgets, forecasting $2.3 million in revenue and expense budgets. This includes ASNC, student health services, student recreation and activities, athletics and commencement. Richard spoke very eloquently early tonight about how fee-based budgets are really impacted by enrollment. And so these groups are working very, very hard to manage these fee-based budgets, but their revenue is strictly tied to traditional four-credit enrollment. Page 16 makes up the service units of the college. This includes the dormitory housing commission, workforce training, other auxiliary services, and the children's center. And we'd just note that there's a $5.8 million revenue budget with $186,000 projected in net income. We'll just highlight, in particular, the great work of workforce training. They've had some substantial changes over the past two years, and it really worked to really align the workforce training work with the economic needs in our region. Page 17 is our grants and contracts. This includes area agency on aging, Head Start, the other grants, primarily Trio, the Small Business Development Center, and the great work of the INBRI grant. The board reviews Head Start specifically, but the other grant programs, these are strictly tied to the grant offerings that we receive, or the contract amount of the contracts. Briefly on page 19 of the budget, the total consolidated budget for North Idaho College for next fiscal year, total revenues of $63.5 million against revenues there of $63.3 million. This is bringing in all of those components, the general funds, the fee-based budgets, the services, and the grants. Of note this year, and the primary change I just want to make everyone aware of is, we have finished our tax grant for healthcare very successfully, but that was a significant increase in grant funding, and this current year is our last year doing that. So that's the major change we just want to highlight year-over-year. And then on page 18, the one-time expenses, just want to bring your attention to this page as well. We did this last year. This is an effort to strategically buy down some of the fund balance that we've been carrying over time to address some specific needs at the college. Of note, you'll see is an innovation fund, CTE material storage, a salary market analysis survey, advising software implementation, and some specific campus space plan remodels, for a total expense of $502,500. And again, this is very much in line with what you saw last year. Happy to stand for questions, and thank you, Chair Wood, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Chris, and again, thank you for the one-on-one meetings with trustees. It is nice that it's not the first time we're seeing the information. As many times as possible is good for us. So thank you. Board, any questions on the budget tonight? Trustee Banducci.
Yes, ma'am. Questions, I guess, or a couple of comments. One is, and Chris and I talked about this, I know it's a small increase for the in-district tuition. I would like to just have us chew on that a little bit, either even cut it or eliminate it. We're talking $73,000 total approximately in revenue from that. We're already coming out of our reserve with almost a half a million dollars because of the shortfall in this budget. We have a significant reserve. We're still putting our $2.5 million away in the capital reserve fund. We raised tuition last year. We raised taxes last year. I'd love to have the differential increase a little bit more between in and out of district tuition. I think the property owners in Cootney County are burying a, are burying their share of the load, let me just say it that way. So I would love us to consider if we didn't have to raise it all in district. And I don't know, just being aware, we are taking a little bit of money out of reserve to make this budget work, but I don't think that does too much more to that. I'm still also not convinced on the salary market analysis survey. I think we've done a lot of that, and we're repeating. I'd almost like to see that on a tri-year cycle or something, maybe. I don't know that we need to spend money on that, at least on an annual basis. We do have a fair bit of data from the Western Community College Group, and from in-state and others for some comparative purposes. It's not a lot of money, but that'd give me back over a third of shaving off the tuition increase. So.
Okay.
Just want to keep it as affordable as I can for our in-district people.
Well, this is first reading, so that's the time for ideas and feedback.
That's it. Just throwing some stuff out there.
Thank you.
See what sticks against the wall.
Trustee Howard.
I guess I have a question. There's a fund balance transfer request of $496,000, $400 to cover, excuse me, the shortfall. And then on the page 18, we identify the one-time expenses. It's an additional $502,000. That's not included in the budget anyplace yet, is that correct?
It is not included in the budget. It would be a request against general fund balance as well.
That would be an additional.
It would be additional to the four.
The balances that we see, there would need to be an additional transfer out of...
Correct. If the board was to authorize the one-time expenses, that's correct.
And the salary market analysis survey, that's, is that the survey that we asked for a couple of years ago? I mean, we haven't done one in a long time, have we?
That is correct. That is the survey that was requested last year. It was in the budget last year as a one-time expense as well. That did not occur, and so we're requesting, again, authorization to do that this upcoming fiscal year.
And the idea was, we were only going to do that, and we haven't got the new policy yet, but every three to five years, whatever the policy ends up saying.
Correct. Chair Wood, Trustee Howard, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board? We have plenty of time for you to contact Chris and the president and the administrative team prior to our final approval of the budget. So if you have further questions or input, you have time to do that. So.
Chair Wood, if I may.
Yes.
You'll also notice in the appendix, the board receives copies of all proposed fee changes. And a couple I want to make, again, I would like to highlight some of the work of our division chairs and program faculty. You'll notice this year, and I would like to just to stress this, as you flip through there, there's a whole lot of numbers that are in red. And that is not because it's a change from what you saw, but it's because it's a reduction of what students have paid in prior years. And the work that the faculty and instructional team have done to true that up is really, really impressive. The place that I'll draw your attention to that's not like that is specifically related to dental. There are some big increases in dental, and that has to do with the fact that it's a new program. And as this program rolls out, there are expenses tied to that that are student fee-related. So before this, we get to the second reading, I just wanted to make that, number one, appreciation to instruction for their hard work, and really truing those up and keeping costs as affordable as they can for students. And second, provide some context for the dental change.
Great. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, Trustee.
Hey, Chris, you know, as we're talking about fees being reduced, and of course, we think about overall expenses, whether it be food, housing, lodging, books, things like that. Is there any way that this captures some of the savings we've achieved because of the work that Casey Wilhelm and Ted Tedman are doing, and getting some of the books electronically, and some of the things they're doing with the publishers that they're working with, and how they were getting some of that free for our students? That doesn't really reflect in here anyway, does it?
Chair Wood, Trustee Banducci, because it's related to textbooks, it's not reflected here. But if there was an electronic resource fee for those classes, and it was being waived, it would be reflected in this case.
Okay. Okay. And I know we've had some substantial savings, as long as they're working, and I guess our students get the books for free, essentially. So.
That's great.
Yeah, they're doing some great stuff with that.
And I'm very pleased to hear about dental insurance. That's important. Well, Chris, I guess I'd like to take the time to compliment Dr. McLennan and yourself and the administrative team, really, the whole campus. From what we understand, this has been a huge campus effort at every single level to have some involvement in the budget process. That's very important to us. You know best, a lot of times, what's going on, what your needs are, and you come back and let us know, and we will do our best to support your needs. But that kind of communication is invaluable to us. So congratulations to you for this type of a budget. Again, we will have time to review it, ask more questions, make suggestions, and so we'll, Trustee Banducci.
I want to add to what you just said.
Sure.
The work that Chris and Sarah are doing. We were together for what, hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes the other day, and really, they're doing a good job. We really went at this thing, and I was impressed with the information they had, and the answers, and the notes they took, and even some of the changes that I see based on some of our discussion. Again, I don't know if I was the only trustee, but I see at least three or four things that we specifically touched on. So, good work. Great job, guys.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That takes us to the Board Chair Report. Just a couple of things that are very important. I want to, Dr. McLennan didn't highlight this tonight, so I get to. Why are you so humble? So he was recently appointed to the National Association for Community College Entrepreneurship Board of Directors. And this is the nation's leading organization focused on promoting entrepreneurship through community colleges, and they have named him our president to their board of directors. They talk about his work with the recent launch of the college's Co-Creation Center, and the creativity and collaboration for the college and the entire North Idaho community. and the creativity and collaboration for the college and the entire North Idaho community. They really highlight your work, which is really great. The specific quote is, "We're delighted to have President McLennan as a member of the NACCE Board." That's from the chair, Susan May. She is the president of Fox Valley Technical College, and I've had the pleasure of taking some courses there, ongoing education through Fox Valley through my work, so that, they are an excellent organization. And she states that he is a proven leader and innovator who will help NACCE continue its critical mission of promoting entrepreneurship through community colleges across the country and beyond. So congratulations and thank you for that kind of representation at such a national level. Thank you very much. The other items I want to bring to you from our wonderful foundation, Bon Appetit is Friday, May 18. Social begins at 5:30 PM, dinner and live auction to follow. This is at the Country Club, and it's a, it's a big night for the foundation. It's one of their biggest fundraisers. I think it might be the biggest fundraiser, if I recall. And as you all know, all of that money goes to student scholarships and the greatest needs here on this campus. So if there's any chance people listening at home can attend this, we'd love to have them there. The other thing from the foundation is their 25th anniversary, 25 years of the really big house raffle, and these sell out very fast. And I can't buy one because I'm, I think it's a conflict. That's no good, but the rest of you can. And it's really kind of nice that they don't sell very many, I think only 5,500, and it's usually someone local that wins or even just barely over the border, so it's a wonderful thing. I guess that's their biggest fundraiser. And so those are the things I wanted to bring you from the foundation. And other than that, I would ask for good of the order.
Yeah, first of all, it's only a conflict if you win.
Right. That's a problem. I don't want to give it back.
Just a reminder, if we're contemplating going to the 2018 ACCT Leadership Conference, it's in New York, which probably jacks the price up a little bit. It's October 24 through the 27, and the early bird deadline is the 17th of August, so just thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you, Trustee Murray, for bringing that up. It is important, in my opinion, we have tried every year to send a trustee or two to these conferences for professional development. We need to practice what we preach. I personally cannot attend the New York conference, but Trustee Murray is our ACCT representative. I hope you're considering it. We do budget for the conference, and so it's in the ordinary course of things. But other trustees, if that's something that you're considering, it would be important for you to connect with Shannon as soon as possible and get those travel arrangements made. All right, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn. I'm just going to adjourn. Adjourn. See, my other...